Welcome to the council meeting, November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Anyone in the audience that can't find headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seen any, um, let's write for the pledge, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Mayor Neffco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember staff.
Here.
And councilmember.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager.
Not at the time, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Council, how many board reports to share? We're ready for a reading of consent agenda? Donna, will you read it?
Vouchers number one 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 three six five through one 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 eight eight seven. And EFT payment numbers seven seven three through seven eight one. On the total amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, five hundred. Try again. One hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and thirty eight cents. Vouchers number one 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 nine one three through one 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 nine five five. And yet to payments. Seven, seven eight two through eight zero three. In the total amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty cents. A roll warrants numbered four zero zero five through four zero one zero. And one three six four nine through one three seven five two. Horns one 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 eight 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 through one 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 nine zero six. Amount of five hundred and thirty two thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars and four cents. Minutes from the business meeting of October first, twenty twenty four. And study session of October eighth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Donna. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council and non-individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. And the reasonable disruptive conduct continued, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, anyone sign up for a comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I think tonight I will start with Dave Redmond on Zoom since he was here earlier. Mr. Redmond, it's your turn.
Thanks, Donna. Here goes take two. So every couple of weeks, I take a few minutes, I speak at this meeting. And tonight, I'd like to take a mo- uh, take a moment and remind everybody that most people just live one paycheck or maybe two from homelessness. These are people who work a daily grind, pay bills, and work to make ends meet. If something goes wrong, they don't have the resources to cover, uh, anything, and they may lose their homes. And as a matter of fact, most of the formerly homeless people that provide lodging village, uh, did not become homeless because of drugs or alcohol or anything negative. Uh, the reasons they lost their home cover everything from medical emergencies to jobs going under, rent being raised, and so many other reasons. Uh, and I'd like to take a moment to talk about that, and I kind of pulled up some sources and then attempt to convey how close most people are being in the same situation. Uh, according to data available from the Federal Reserve Board of, uh, Board Survey of Consumer Finances, the median savings balance, not including retirement funds, of Americans under thirty-five is just over three thousand dollars. And that jumps to, uh, just over six thousand dollars for people aged fifty-five to sixty-four. And that may seem, may seem like a pretty good checkbook amount, but remember this, most Americans don't have any savings at all. According to Bankrate data from July twenty twenty-two, uh, fifty-six percent of Americans would be unable to cover an unexpected bill of a thousand dollars or more with their savings. So what that means is that Americans are very much, in general, undersaved. And it's my hope that maybe we as a community can make an effort to help find a solution instead of simply showing up and lodging random complaints, uh, to, to the council without any attempt to provide anything positive. All it does is spread hatred and create a toxic atmosphere. If any member of Shelton honestly wanted to help, they could visit the homelessness task force that was convened in June. And it's comprised of law enforcement, nonprofit service providers, community service members, et cetera. Uh, and, you know, the goal there was to, uh, was to include a wide range of experiences and perspectives uh, on the task force, uh, to address the issues of homelessness that impact us all in so many different ways. Uh, if they are interested, the task force meets regularly at Civic Center. The meetings are recorded and they're available to watch on YouTube. And ultimately, a task force is going to prepare a list of six to eight recommendations to present to the city council. And the council then decide how they'd like to approach these recommendations. So I'd like to take the time in this public forum to thank the people that volunteered to be on the task force, uh, to ta- from, for taking the time to, from the day, from the daily grind to help. I'd like to thank the council for listening to recommendations that, that, that they make. And I'd like to thank the residents of Shelton for, uh, showing respect to their fellow residents. With that being said, thank you for letting me go first, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dave.
I think I want to first then find out. Even that's my full.
I just want to make a few comments. Uh, I attended your last, uh, study session on TBD renewal. And, uh, I'm really happy with what's done for the city. You guys handled the money really well. We've got some great projects that you've done, and I'm sure there's more in the future. Which brings me to the study session. The only thing I, I think you, you were kind of missing was some of the history and context of how this came about. This wasn't a very popular thing when we did this. In fact, it had been talked about for probably twenty years prior to that. And everywhere we went, or if people went, it was really shut down. It's a taxing rate. Nobody wants it, no matter what the political climate is. Um, I lost myself there for a second. Uh, but I want to show you the importance of, 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 you can't. Some of the comments I heard was, was that you wanted to possibly up the co- or up the amount of tax to the point of three. Or you wanted to couple it with a tab tax on license plates. And I think that, uh, you're making a mistake if you do that. I think this is almost a perfect system. If you leave it alone and, and really educate the public on what you've done with the money and not try to mess with it, it'll pass again. But I think that, uh, you have to be real careful with this. It's, uh, like I said, it doesn't matter what the economic climate or political. People don't like taxing prices. So I, I encourage you to, to leave alone and, and just, you know, work with the public and educate them on this. And that brings me around to the next little comment, uh, along with your, your, your homelessness initiative you're trying to work on. And it's, uh, I, I applaud you for that. I think it's a great effort. I, I think it needs to be done, but I think you gotta be real careful again about, I heard a talk of, of not letting the public vote on it. If you guys do this council madding before the TBD comes up, I think you'll fail on the TBD. And five million dollars goes a long way in our city for the roads we have. So I just want you to really kind of weigh those two options out. You know, it's, it's a tough choice. But I can say people do not like to be taxed without representation. And if you do this council madding, it's going to bite you bad, I believe. And you'll fail on the TBD when it comes up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. We have two presentations this evening, or first item is in health, health department is off all.
Hello, um. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to let you know what we're doing soon. But we did last quarter, so this is third quarter. Here you see a picture of Clarence Bocham, and he's working on the log monument, at least. It looks that way. Um, and then, uh, this was in nineteen fifty-three, and that was the Forest Festival Queen, Sherilyn Brown. So for third quarter, we had total number of visitors of one thousand twenty-nine who came through the door. When they walk in the door, we have a sheet, we have big little hash marks. So we know exactly how many people. We don't always know exactly where they came from. Um, but in this case, um, you know, we do take, we ask people to sign in, we interview them when they come in, you know, subtly. And, um, of those, we had roughly ninety-one people were from distances greater than fifty miles. And then a hundred and thirteen were from out state, and those we're pretty sure about. The, the ninety-one is a little tricky, and then twenty international visitors. So we had people from Chile. We had people from Norway, um, Australia. You know, so they're coming a long ways, and you know the destination is the Olympic National Park. But if we can bring them in and slow them down, um, and get them to spend a little time in Shelton, that's always our goal. Um, eighty-one calls. And not all from people wanting to, wanting to help their Google, our Google rather. And, um, and then fifty-two emails, which are pretty much research type questions, not just ads. So, next slide, please. Facebook, um, these were our two top posts. We still have something, you know, thirty-one or three thousand followers. Let's see, I wrote it down because I can't bring that up there. Um, the, we got a lot of interest in a musical that they held in Port Angeles about John Turner. It was based on the book by Mike Fredson called Big Man. And Mike went, saw it, was kind of horrified because it was a musical. Um, but, um, but it was, it's very interesting. Um, and they based it. They ordered the book from us because I remember when the order came in and said, we're writing a musical, and it's like, John Turner, a musical? Okay. Um, and then the other thing too was, um, an article about, um, Mike Fredson again, and the, well, not about Fredson, but about artist colony on. Um, next slide, please. Website traffic, all pretty much, um, reflects that. So it's from Square, our biggest seller was the artist colony, but now both by Mike Fredson, that was an eight hundred percent increase from people's order. Next slide, please. Google Analytics, that's the same thing. Once again, you know, for minutes, um, sixteen hundred unique visits to our page. And about three thousand one hundred page views. Next. Here's the, um, the article that was in the Seattle Times, um, they came down and interviewed, or came down and talked to us. One of the guys is a member of the museum. And then his friend is the guy who did the article. He's a freelance writer. And so we got, you know, we got a lot of traffic from that, both online and in the museum itself. And it continues to be just a really interesting story of Ori Nobles and the, the artist colony and homeless man. Our current exhibit is an art, artistry of Clarence Bocham. You know, as I saw earlier, he did the log monument. He also designed the Big Santa that used to stand on Drell Road Avenue. Um, and I think it's out of from the farms now. Along with, so he was a painter, signed painter for Simpson, and, um, just, he was just extremely clever, did a lot of carving, um, painting, all sorts of things. So we have a really nice selection of this work at the museum, so you should come and see it. Um, next slide, please. This Saturday, we had, at two P M., we have a, a writer, um, Pamela McCall, um, who wrote a book called Twas the Night, so it's about art and history about the poem of the Ninety Four. And we also have, we know she would have designed. Would like to join us for that, that would be great. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Right, we have another report from Peter Peterson of the Chamber.
Good evening, Mayor, W Mayor and council members. I was here not too long ago, but I am back to talk with you about our third quarter visitor services. As you're very well aware, the city is one of the partners in our funding strategy to provide visitor services at three locations. The heaviest traffic is, of course, the Hootsport Visitor Center being at the staircase entrance to the national park. But we also have a visitor center in the chamber office and the caboose. So if we look at the next slide, it's going to primarily focus on, um, it'll include the counts for all breed. But you'll see there the maps and passes that we sell. And we have a really incredible partnership with the U S Forest Service and the National Park Service. Um, we have contracts with them that allow us to sell a variety of places and passes. Those folks are coming to the area, we can navigate to, do they need one, do they need both, are they crossing different areas? Um, we have an incredible group of volunteers who are able to help navigate that. Um, we saw some, like the Northwest Forest Day Pass was up almost four hundred percent. I've included here both the figures from this year and last year, as well as pre-COVID numbers, because of course, we're always comparing how does this look to what used to be normal, um, so we can assess our, um, services that we're providing there. And you'll see that phone calls have continued to remain stable. And we've actually forwarded calls from the Hootsport Visitor Center so that if someone calls and they're busy or their, their office is closed, it gets forwarded to the chamber office proper so that someone's able to answer the phone and talk with those folks. Um, they're usually looking for a little bit more hands-on itinerary planning um, than somebody who's popping in to grab a brochure or a map. Um, we continue to see, um, as the amounts of passes go through, but oddly enough, we had a really difficult time securing enough inter-agency American vehicle passes. And that was not unique to us. That was something throughout the region, that trying to get them federally to our area was difficult, and it's created a bit of a pain point for visitors to our area. So we are working with the National Park Service to see what we can do to ease that, um, moving into the twenty twenty-five season. Um, we had over four thousand visitors, actually over forty-three hundred visitors this year in third quarter. Um, which is up about ten percent from last year and about a hundred and thirty-six percent above what we did pre-COVID. About four hundred phone calls during that time, and of course, we also were feeling email inquiries and, um, a larger number of Google messages and Facebook messages as well. So we wonder those. The next set slide, please. So we have two Facebook pages that we use, um, at the chamber. One is, of course, the chamber page itself. While it is for our association and focuses on businesses and nonprofits, it's a great way for people to find out about things that are happening in the area. And so we do have about five thousand followers on that page, and our quarterly reach was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The Hood Canal Visitor Center page is specific to Hootsport, and it's been a great asset in capturing when there is a road closure or weather prevents people accessing the trails. And the Rangers have been incredible about working with our volunteers to provide us updates. So we can post those to the visitor center page on Facebook as well as, of course, our Google posts. So you'll see there that, of course, a large number of folks, um, following that page are from the Shelton area because, again, paper business association. But we also see the surrounding area, and a lot of times we're seeing folks coming in because they have friends, nobody can stay, or they're opening an Airbnb and they're looking to augment that experience for folks. So, next slide, please. Our Google landing page there, um, we have a separate landing page for the caboose itself. Um, and again, great thanks to all of the volunteers who turned out in second quarter to give her some love. Um, the city, thank you for helping us with permits and getting tollie cleaned up as well. It really is nice to see visitor center looking nice and shiny on Railroad Avenue. Um, I've gotten some really positive remarks from people stopping in and leaving kind notes, which is lovely to see. Um, the top three reasons people are finding that booth's page on Google, usually on their phone, um, is that they're looking for attractions. It is on the National Historic Registry. Um, they're looking for a visitor center, or oddly enough, we come up when they search for the Aberdeen Visitor Center. They'll try and figure that one out. Um, but you'll also see there, some people are specifically searching for caboose, um, or day trips to and from Shelton. So I would like to see what people are actually looking for that's bringing it to us. Next page. One thing that we started in second quarter and continued in third quarter, um, is that we utilized our hours by flexing the staff we have on our team to provide coverage during special events. So when there is a car show or when there is a festival of sorts, and we know there's going to be a presence, especially in the downtown area, during a time that normally the chamber office wouldn't be open, we flexed our hours to make sure that there's someone in person that can provide really really robust and really authentic feedback to our visitors. And so a huge shout out goes to particularly Katie Peck, who's been working in our office on and off since high school, um, and is on with me now full-time while she's going to college. And she was one of our amazing staffers that showed up for these events. Um, and really lent another layer to downtown vibrancy during the summertime. And that really goes to show our commitment to providing an excellent visitor experience. Um, and the expectation that folks have of knowing what do you like about where you are, because we don't, you know, we don't visit in our own backyard, and so some of the things our team has to learn is like, where would you go to rent an ATV, or where would you go to get on a boat, because they have friends or they have family, and, um, it provides a different, um, challenge for them, but I also think it's really amazing for the visitors because they get to hear where their favorite fishing spot is and which part of the trail they like, and where they take their dog when they're going out. And we do see canine friends as a bigger market, which is really interesting. So we actually have a really cool photo, courtesy of the museum, um, of the caboose with one of our timber folks and their dog on the back that Rachel Hansen is working on restoring for us to put in the caboose as well. Um, and next slide. Yep, just any closing questions you might have for us about the visitor services the chamber provides?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. The only business item is for us to approve a work order. General Project Manager Aaron Nix has details for us.
Mayor, uh, council, thank you. Uh, it's an honor to work with the city. I'm thankful for that. Um, I bring forward, um, an issue to you. We entered into a work order agreement, um, with, uh, RH two consultants, uh, to do some, um, vent hood replacement design workforce. What we have currently, if folks don't know, um, our reservoirs are, are very old, or at least over fifty years old. We have four of them that have roof vents that don't meet current code. Um, they basically have screens in them. They allow for, for airflow to go back and forth. Under the new regulations, the Department of Health is requiring that we put up new vent hoods that have basically a one-way valve on it that only allows to discharge out. The thought being is you're not allowing pollutant contaminants back into your water supply. So we thought we could get off and get, get through this on the cheap. Um, so that's why we initially scoped out this project to not include structural analysis of our reservoirs with the hopes that we could get through DOH and we get through permitting without doing that. Well, that's not the case. What, what you have before you and the reason why it's coming forward to you as the council is that it's over the city manager's signing authority. Basically, it's an additional seventeen thousand dollars to go out and physically do as builds of those structures, as well as the structural analysis to ensure that when we cut into the top of this thing, we're not going to cause it to leak, to crack or break. That's cause, that could be catastrophic for us if something like that happened. So we went back, we worked with them. I, I will tell you from a budget perspective, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars to, to do the design and construct two of them at the time, and that was the start of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we got some estimates, uh, to construct these things, about forty thousand dollars. So with that, we had to do some of this design work. Obviously, we budgeted another hundred fifty K in, in subsequent year, next year, and these all need to be completed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. That's a mandate from the Department of Health. So what our desire is, is we're hoping that the council will approve us to include this additional engineering structural analysis so that then we, then we can proceed. If indeed the, the hoods are forty thousand dollars apiece, that provides us with a hundred and sixty thousand plus the forty, that gives us adequate resources to finish this thing and put it behind us. So I'm here before you asking you if you could, uh, uh, make a recommendation to put this in the consent agenda at your next meeting, please.
Thank you, Aaron. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the place resolution number one three five four dash one zero two four onto the consent agenda at the council's December three, twenty twenty-four meeting for further consideration.
Thank you.
Can you interrupt this?
Oh, sorry. Uh, how much are questions? Needs to be done. Thank you, Aaron. We have a motion to second to play resolution number one three five four dash one zero two four onto the consent agenda on the council December third, twenty twenty-four meeting for the consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Carrie, thank you. Right. On to our action agenda, now have, uh, Parks and Rec Supervisor Gordon and some information regarding Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Thank you, Mayor, members of, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, tonight I bring you the next recommendations for the rotating art gallery. Um, we did a call of artists, uh, to social, our social media, um, art galleries and organizations that we use for outreach. And we had a total of five artists for this submission. Um, the deadline for it was on November first, and the Arts Commission met on November fifth to jury that round of art. Um, some of the artists we have is Dennis Go with some watercolor, Elizabeth Jacobson with some digital photography, Larry Carbaugh with some wood carving, Tammy Green with ink and watercolor pieces, and Tom Ryder with some prints. Um, all great art. It's a great rotation for this upcoming one. Um, and since tonight I'm bringing you those requests, and then this rotation will be from December third through February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-five. Um, today I'm just looking for final approval. Any questions?
Thank you, George. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for placement in the Civic Center rotating market.
All right. We, uh, sorry, how much are questions?
I love the diversity of the different art. Yeah, it's always great to see stuff, new stuff coming in. Um, half of these are artists that we've had multiple times, so it's great to see them returning with different pieces.
Ducks on the grates.
Yes, the ducks will be the display because the top of the stairs, right? Be great to see.
People really enjoy walking in here and looking at the art. I know they're coming in to pay their bill and they stop. That's totally great. So thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank the Arts Commission as well. All right, we have a motion to second to approve the Shelton Arts Commission recommendations for the placement of Civic Center rotating art gallery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That throws me off every time. Right. Okay, we're recessing for a regular public, or a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Our first item on the ordinance related to the twenty twenty-five budget, Finance Director Mike Giddens has more information.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. So we had a change to the budget. We mentioned it. I didn't have much detail at our first public hearing. Normally, we try to bring you the same thing, but you want to be, is get it all right. So here's the change, and it changes, it changes things in a few places. Thanks to Don Quisby, who works hand in hand on this. We found we had a number of places to change. The change is in the general fund. The expenditures increased. So if, I'll draw your attention to page four of the new budget. So that's with the city manager letter dated November eighth. So on the general fund line, um, it increased, so I think just to summarize that, we're using more of the end fund balance to pay for twenty twenty-five. So it increased to one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, ala that ending fund utilization. This, uh, was, we have not included an expense in the community development department. This is an expense related to the comprehensive plan, its professional services. There is some, uh, grant money tied to this. That was included, but we didn't have a high enough expenditure in professional services. Other than that, the presentation of the budget is exactly the same as it was at that first public hearing.
Right. Donna, has anyone signed up for public, public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
They've read the ordinance number two zero. They're reading the ordinance number two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, nine, two, four.
Ordinance number two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, nine, two, four. In ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, update the budget for the chapter year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Thank you, Mike and your staff for all your hard work. All right, we have motion to second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, nine, two, four presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. We are now open another public hearing. We have other items. Mike.
So we're on to property taxes. Okay. Make sure it's on the right thing. So the, we call these ad valorem and I just wanted to say all that means is according to value. These are. At. It's on the assessed value of the item being tapped. In this case, property. So. We got final numbers from Mason County Assessor. Really, just as it was with S N P D, the only change is we have less new construction. Value for us. So that's the decrease. Less value on new construction. Everything else on that's the same, but it changes the overall amount for both the EMS levy as well as the city's primary property tax levy. So there's a little bit different amount that they use for that. That's shown on the updated document that was placed at your. Spot. So this again. Hundred and one percent and funds both the EMS levy that we have and the city's main property tax levy.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, any sort of public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We're reading the ordinance number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, nine, two, four.
Ordinance number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, nine, two, four. And ordinance of the City of Washington setting the amount of the annual ad valorem taxes in the city of Shelton for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented.
Right. Comments or questions? Right, we have motion to second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, nine, two, four presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This public hearing is closed. We're resuming a regular meeting. We have more, one more from Mike.
All right. So the master fee schedule also had one correction and I mentioned this at the meeting. This falls under the Water System Connection G F C on page twenty. The cost for a three-quarter inch was corrected to be three thousand and thirty dollars. It had read thirty-three hundred. So that was an increase. It's just been an entry error. That's corrected. Everything else in the master fee schedule remains the same as presented.
Right. Donna, any sort of public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right, and reading the resolution number one, three, four, eight, dash, zero, nine, two, four.
Resolution number one, three, four, eight, dash, zero, nine, two, four. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, updating and establishing the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one, three, four, eight, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented.
Second.
Right. Comments or questions? We have motion to second to adopt resolution number one, three, four, eight, dash, zero, nine, two, four as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Right. Next, an ordinance regarding high limit removal. Community Economic Development Director Jay Hill. He's on the board. Why put that out?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. As you'll remember back in September, well, in August, there was a study session to talk about what's to do with high limits in the city, where they should be located. We were trying to proceed with just moving the high limits and allowing building vote if they. Maximum of the structures. We still have zoning regulations and building code regulations, sign of the regulations that would prevent horribly low levels from appearing to be taller. And hopefully encourage some of the development. To see related to four-to-one workforce housing. So. As we talked about this in September, there was a required sixteen to be by commerce. Commerce did not provide comments as. They are allowed to but are not required to. So we always heard from them. But it's good. So that means so we see the adoption date. That's still a labor of the council. So are you going to answer any questions about that? Obviously, the, I gave a much longer presentation.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, any sort of public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
They have a reading of number, ordinance number two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, eight, two, four.
Ordinance number two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, eight, two, four. And ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Title twenty of the Shelton Municipal Code for the purpose of abolishing building high limits.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance number two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, eight, two, four as presented.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Just wanted to know if anyone is taking this up on this offer of. Or thinking about having buildings that are higher than what they were before.
We haven't had anybody approach us yet.
Thanks.
Well, hopefully this will allow us to more than two-story apartment buildings in Shelton and help us in a cop land moving forward. Get locations actually for. Any other question? We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, eight, two, four as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
One more. Hey, our last item is the resolution to approve legal defense costs. The manager Mark Sager has the details for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In early October, the City of Shelton was served. With a summons by Knockfearna LLC for the failure to issue a building permit for a marijuana produ- production facility on Mill Street. The city did not issue the permit because their plans did not need building and fire codes. That was clearly communicated with the applicant a number of times. In fact, this dates back to sometime in twenty seventeen when this process was started. Since that time. And several iterations of. Different applications and different representatives from the applicant. They have now filed suit against the city and the mayor solely as a council member. Under Municipal Code two point eight-two, city officials are entitled to legal defense. If they're acting in good faith for the city. I will say that the mayor has no role in permitting or permit review processes. So in my opinion, certainly was acting in good faith in this measure. So. This is a procedural request to provide legal defense for the mayor with the council's approval.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve resolution number one, three, five, six, dash, one, one, two, four as presented.
Second.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor?
Yep. Resolution number one, three, five, six, dash, one, one, two, four.
We need to see if there's public comments. Is there a public comment? And there is not. And then we need a reading of the new resolution.
We get a reading for the resolution of one, three, five, six, dash, one, one, two, four.
Resolution number one, three, five, six, dash, one, one, two, four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, approving legal defense for Marinasco in the matter of the Marinato L D for this city of Shelton.
And now I move to approve resolution number one, three, five, six, dash, one, one, two, four as presented.
Sorry.
All in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Sorry, I'm a little thrown off.
I don't know. So you're just seeking, you're removing yourself from the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're abstaining at this point. Okay, so the record can show mayor abstaining for the vote.
What is that, March?
Good question. Okay.
All right.
I've been writing the policy.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Mark, you have a city manager report.
Uh, just a couple of things tonight. There's a windstorm apparently going on, right? As we know. I'll assure you, our public works department has been meeting and coordinating any response in to this event. So we're prepared to deploy our staff to clear roads and assist in any measures that might, might take place, not only in the city but regionally as needed. So appreciate all of their work and their standby tonight. The parking lot at four, two, five, West Coda, just across the street, the, with the Lincoln Court is going to be closed as of tomorrow morning for construction of the tree maze. So trees started showing up today and they'll continue showing up tomorrow. And then the volunteers that are involved with that will start installing the maze. And that will be closed until after first year when the maze is taken down. So we're happy to house that next door over at the. Parking lot. Also recognize, last night, the mayor and myself attended the Creative District Forum. Great turnout. A lot of people that haven't been necessarily involved in other events in this community. So it's great to have. New people and new blood involved, particularly the artist community that is, that is so ingrained throughout Mason County. And there's some great things that are continuing to happen with the Creative District. So we'll make sure and have some more updates with the council as that gets worked through with the. With the committee that's working on that and Director Hill, who's leading up that chart. So that is all I have for you tonight.
Council, how many new items for discussion?
Tomorrow is the maiden of this birthday. So I wish him a happy birthday.
Twenty-nine. Yep, all right.
All right. In the other council, I have some discussion.
Wanted to let everyone know, come on down to Coe Street and go and look at that tree maze. Bring the family, get hot chocolate and have a good time.
We have two days for that, but yes, sounds, sounds.
Right.
Also, we need to congratulate our judge first.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be, I think we'll have a presentation at the December third meeting, correct? Judge Greer? Yeah. And so talk a little bit more about the innovating justice grant that the Judge Greer in the municipal court received just last week. So quite proud of that, of the program that they've continued to provide to our community and have had great results.
Okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, December third at six P M. We all have today's session beginning November twenty-six, six P M. And this meeting is adjourned at six forty.
Might be a little U P S up there.
They are.